Meeting of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs on Tuesday, August 21st, 2018 at 6:30 PM. A roll call please.
Mayor LaHoozis?
Here.
Vice Mayor Banther.
Here.
Commissioner Seber is not here yet. Commissioner Kekta?
Here.
Commissioner Carr?
Here.
Tonight's invocation will be given by Reverend Melvin Smith from the Herman, Mount Herman Missionary Baptist Church. If you please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegion.
Let us bow our heads in prayer. Dear Lord, we thank you for this wonderful day. We're grateful for all your many blessings that you have stored upon us in our life. We're grateful to be able to live in this state, this county, this city. We pray your blessings upon this mayor and Board of Commissioners. Please continue to grant them wisdom and knowledge as they make decisions for the city. Bless the city staff, clerk, city manager, and all those who perform their duties each day. We pray especially for the first responders, our firemen, police. Be with them, protect them each day as they provide safety over the residents. We ask you blessed upon this meeting tonight. Bless all that are here. In your son's name we pray. Amen.
Pledge of Allegion to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our commission meeting. I want to thank you all for being here tonight. We will start our meeting tonight with a public comments on the items that will not be discussed tonight. If anyone has any comments, please come forward and state your name and your address for the record. You give him four minutes.
Good evening. My name is Jax Burke. I'm at 2008 Golf View Drive, Tarpon Springs. Tonight, I'm speaking on behalf of the group Preserve Tarpon. We understand that Wawa has withdrawn their permanent application for the northwest corner of Miras and Pinellas. We would like to introduce these signed petitions and letters into the public record. We also ask that they be included in the project file with the Planning and Zoning Department. Although this project is now moot, our hope is you will consider these opinions in consideration of any future project on this site.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments? I hear none. Thank you very much. The item number one on the agenda is the St. Petersburg College Tarpon Springs. Dr. Davis Provost. Ladies and gentlemen, it is my pleasure and an honor to introduce to the Board of Commissioners and to the people of Tarpon Springs the new Provost of St. Petersburg College, Tarpon Springs Campus, my friend, Dr. Davis.
Thank you. Thank you.
Dr. Davis grew up in Tarpon Springs. He graduated from Tarpon High School. He's a sponger. We are fortunate to have Dr. Davis at Tarpon Springs Campus, and we're grateful for his leadership and his direction taking our college to the future. I invited Dr. Davis to share with us the programs of St. Petersburg College, his vision, and his goal in the project.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a PowerPoint? I turned over a PowerPoint. No? I see it. All right. I guess I learned a couple things in school, right? Almost how to turn on a projector and operate it fully. The mayor stole my thunder a little bit. Graduate of Tarpon Springs High School. Glad to be here. I feel like I'm in the auditorium getting ready to perform. Today, I wanted to talk to you guys a little bit about some of the things that we're doing at the college, some of the exciting things, a little bit about the vision, and a little bit of what's going on on the campus. The campus is made up of approximately 6,000 students, and it's remained that way probably for the last five, six years. We have approximately 39% full-time students and 60% part-time students. A lot of our students work 40-plus hours a week and they attend part-time. We have 47% that are AA students, 25 that are workforce, 15 that are undeclared, and 11% that are in our baccalaureate programs. For those of you that don't know, we have a lot of baccalaureate programs, and we're actually getting ready to offer some more degrees. The college is putting a lot of time and effort into figuring out what we can do to serve the community and to serve our constituents and bring in programs that are going to be viable for the economy, the students, and the college itself. A lot of the, majority of our students take face-to-face classes, and believe it or not, almost 50% of our students are at the ages of 18 to 21 years old. So we have a relatively young campus, very full of life. Approximately about three years ago, we did a renovation of our administrative building, and for those of you that don't know, this is sort of Apple meets Starbucks. We gutted out the entire building and then sort of redid the whole thing, knocked out a lot of the walls, and made it very inviting and engaging for students. What we wanted to do was set an atmosphere where the students can sort of come in, relax, and get that face-to-face, one-on-one interaction with our advisors. This building is actually set to do different things. It's not just a registration-type unit. It is actually set up in a way where students can come and relax, faculty can come and have classes there. So it's a very inviting and open space. Our previous building looked a lot like the DMV, so I hope there's no one from the DMV here. I won't offend anyone. So it's a very nice building. Recently, we had a collaborative labs at the Tarpon Springs Campus. We had approximately 63 folks from the community come out, a lot of CEOs, a lot of business leaders, a lot of folks that want to connect with the college. And what we did was we asked a lot of questions of what does the community want to see in regards to the college? How can we bring that college out to you? A lot of the things that we looked at in regards to immediate workforce needs were nursing staff. We're actually getting ready to work with Florida Hospital to sign an agreement to allow more students to do clinicals up here in the North County area. And I'm not going to steal my thunder, so I'll talk a little bit about some of the programs in just a little bit, but geographic information systems, a lot of like statistic-type programs that would be useful for business leaders, you know, a lot of small businesses that are in the community here. But it was a very, very successful opportunity for us to get out there and talk to the folks that we serve as a college. Tarpon has opened its doors to its first food pantry. So right now, we are offering food for students that may not have that luxury. It is one of those things that in nationwide, there are a lot of colleges and universities that are looking at this issue as a problem. Students that are facing this, they normally won't come out and say anything. So it's one of those things where it's kind of hidden. It's an issue, and it certainly affects success rates and how students perform in colleges. Recently, there's an article by the University of Florida and University of Central Florida that touches on this and actually takes students around so we can actually experience what they're experiencing. It's a very, very sad issue, but we're very fortunate to have the space and have a process to where if our students are hungry, they can get some foods there. New, we have a EMT program started in the summer. We started with about 14 students. Now we're up to about 24 students. We are looking at other opportunities as well. The college is putting together a grant for paramedics, and we're looking at that to hopefully bring that in the future as well. So we're looking to bring a lot of things to the North County area because there's a lot of opportunities with the three counties that are up here and the local community here as well. We have the biomedical program that started about two semesters ago. That program is about 142% above where it was before. We're looking to see how we can grow that program and see what other opportunities that poses for us as a college. And that's me and the dummy up there. We're actually getting ready to have a new exhibit at the museum. This is Kevin Grass, who is a professor, artist at the college. He's getting ready to display the No More Casting Couch painting, and this is one of those paintings that's getting ready to go into one of the museums up north, and it's only going to be there for a short while, so you may want to check that out. This is the part where I sort of ask for questions, and I welcome that, and it's one of those things where if you have questions that pertain to the college, I can take it offline. We can set up meetings, and I can figure out how we can work together to better connect the college with the community. That's our goal. I'm looking to bring a lot of new programs, a lot of STEM programs to the college. When we look at a lot of our students being at the age of 18 to 21, 26, a lot of the programs that we have may be viable in the areas of STEM. We're also looking to partner with a lot of community folks and see what we can do to sort of open our doors. Any questions, comments, complaints?
I want to, Dr. Davis, you know, this is the first time that I'm calling you Dr. Davis.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
It's been a long road. I think I lost some hair in the process.
I want to thank you for the presentation. I want to thank you for your involvement with the Tarpon Springs System City Program.
Thank you.
And also, I'm looking forward to continue working with you on the Student Exchange Program.
Absolutely.
And bringing more vocational opportunities here to Tarpon Springs.
Absolutely, and I open my doors to anyone else that would like to meet and discuss opportunities as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other commission comments? Commission Steve?
Yes, thank you. I also appreciate how connected you are with the community and the small business community as well. I've gone to some of the programs that you've had there, and they're wonderful. I did see the new admin building. I was shocked when I walked in. It's like, where'd everything go? It's beautiful. And the cafe, I don't know if any of you have ever been there, and bookstore are great. I'm happy to see that you're going to have some new programs, bachelor degree programs. Can you give us any idea of what those might be?
One of the things that came out of that discussion with the community was a lot of analytics, data analytics, and right now, we are working with the math department and the technology department to see what we can do to put together some programs. Now, we're going to start mainly working with the smaller programs to see if we can build off of that. In other words, if some of the, some of the small businesses want to have that type of a service, they can, they can reach out to the college and do that. I'm personally working on an incubator right now. We have a career hub room at the college where we invite businesses and we allow our students to go out there and seek internships and employment, but I'm looking to take that a little bit further. I'd like the businesses to come out to that site, be able to work at our site, and be able to sort of engage with the faculty, the students, and then see if we can merge all that together and offer student employment and internship opportunities as well. So one of the projects that I'm working on and making some headway in there as possible, but hopefully, we can get some of these degree programs fairly quickly because we want to be able to, you know, introduce them to the community.
Could you tell us a little more about your biomedical program?
The biomedical program has been there for probably three semesters. Right now, we offer weekend classes and night classes there. The, there's a couple of open houses that we had around 60 people show up to see. There's a cup, there's an instructor, there's a tech person. I've refurnished the whole room. We have a new dropdown video-type capabilities in there, and you got to see it for yourself, and I'd love to give a tour and whatnot. But the program looks to fix and sort of take the electronics in the medical industry and kind of get those things built and provide the skills for folks that want the opportunity to go out there and work in that, in that field.
What type of job opportunities?
Hospitals, manufacturing companies, any type of industry like that that has that type of product, I should say.
Well, thank you, and maybe see you tomorrow night. I'll be out there.
That's right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Commissioner Carr?
Thanks, Mayor. Thanks for the presentation and update. I attended St. Pete College for a couple years, got my AA, and then moved on, and I encourage it to anybody that's going from high school to college. For one thing, you're going to save a lot of money, and then you get a lot more hands-on time with the professors and the teachers that are there compared to a general education at one of the larger universities. Can you touch, I know at the time when I was there, like 14 years ago, there was some discussions about dorms and looking at like having, you've got like, I guess, the younger population as 50% of your population of your students. Has there been further discussions about putting dorms on campus at all?
Not to my knowledge. I haven't heard anything, haven't seen it. I welcome all kinds of discussions. Right now, it's, it's an opportunistic period. We are looking at enrollment. We're looking at making sure that we increase our numbers, but I'm always welcoming topics like that, but I have not heard, there has not been discussions about that, but who knows?
I was just curious. Yeah, thanks for that update. And from the analytics side, I know from my professional job, it's something that we look at for experience in all positions, from just doing simple Excel analytics to be able to pull data and so on, and even though it's not an analyst role, there's a lot of expectations that anybody in a management position should, should and know this information. So it's encouraging to hear that some of the programs you're looking into is analytical-based because I know it's needed in the professional world.
Well, it was, it was one of those things that the community brought it up. It kept coming back when folks were discussing what are the needs, which we thought it was very, very interesting. There were a lot of aha moments in those discussions, and that was one of them.
Great. Thanks for the presentation. It's good to see that St. Pete College is doing well in Tarpon Springs.
Thank you.
Congratulations on your new role.
Are there any public comments on this item? Here none. Thank you, Dr. Davis.
Thank you. Thank you all.
We are now going to the consent agenda. Item number two is the attorney fees. Trask and Dino. Envoy is 56566. Number three, special events. Homecoming Parade, Day Change, and number four is the award. RFP number 180118. PRS Disaster Debris Monitoring Service. Any items that you'd like to pull?
Number four, just for clarification.
That's what I had too. And I'd also like to ask Mr. Licorice, for the benefit of the audience and the benefit of the people watching at home, if you please explain the program of Disaster Debris Monitoring Service, how useful it was during the hurricane that we had last year.
Well, obviously, both of our contracts we had, not only our contract for debris removal, but this, this contract for debris monitoring services, to have those in place beforehand was vital. As we saw with this storm here, cities that were trying to scramble to get these type of people in here had a lot of trouble. And of course, there was a lot more money on the other coast of Florida than there was on this coast, and that's why they went there. So it's hard to lock these people in, but you know, we actually went through last year an example of it and had these people. The amount of paperwork, this particular contract, you know, obviously, the debris removal contract is important, but this monitoring and getting all the paperwork right, so when we submit the money to FEMA that we finally, a year and a half or more later, hopefully, get back, is just vital. They're, they've changed their processes. They've put a lot more on our finance department paperwork-wise than before. They couldn't even, we still have had one, Ron Herring said one person bogged down the paperwork almost exclusively since the storm happened, and that's doing none of this monitoring stuff in the paperwork that we have to submit for the debris portion of it. So to have these people locked in and set, and we're real happy in this case because the company that we had locked in, as you can see, the problem was we only had two bids for this. You know, people are not locking themselves in because obviously, when the disaster hits, they look for where the most money is, and if you don't have something locked into place, you know, they're going to look for the most money. We only had this company that we had last year from Maitland, and we had a company from Texas that bid, and all that's looked into. Obviously, there's no funding identified there because it depends when the storm comes up, but again, to have them locked in, they're contracted to us, they come to us no matter what, the prices are locked in, and again, it was, it was vital for us to have and not be in the situations of the other cities, a lot of the other cities last time who didn't have it in place and scrambled to even get somebody to do it at probably a lot higher price than we do. So, so this one, End of Debris, are very important to have locked down, set, and the company that you know is there and that's dedicated to you.
They helping us with the FEMA paperwork, don't they?
Yes. That's what, that's what they, they're out there following the trucks around because you have to have extensive documentation of what the trucks pick up, where they pick it up, if it's qualified for FEMA reimbursement. So you've got them with their, with their computers. They're following those trucks around, doing the documentation as it goes, hand in hand with the debris removal people, to lock down the paperwork that we will not get rejected by the time it goes to FEMA. We finally get the big check back from them for this, finally, and I'll bring it here because, you know, I say, it's probably a little ways to go because it takes time. That's the kind of stuff we have to have to recover as much of the taxpayers' money as we possibly can. So again, Ron can tell you how much, you know, how much it helps him and again, his staff. This time, a lot of the stuff that FEMA used to do, they've put the burden back on the cities. So the paperwork between this and the last storm has increased tremendously. So again, that's, that's the importance of having a debris monitoring company that's dedicated to you.
Thank you. Commissioner Carr?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't see any pricing. I just see that it's an RFP and a score. So you said, you mentioned that we were locking in pricing. I'm just curious. I know it's not funded because we don't necessarily need it right now. What is that pricing going to be? I know typically at some part of our...
Ron, do you have a... Ron might have.
Good evening, Mayor. Commissioner is Ron Herring, Finance Director. It's, it depends on the personnel that's working on the project. You know, it goes from project manager, hourly rates at $95 an hour, field supervisor 65, data manager $60 an hour, field monitors $39 an hour, drop-off site monitors $39 an hour, and data support personnel $35 an hour.
So it just comes down to how much work is actually needed, right?
Correct.
All right. Thank you.
Any other question?
No.
Any other question? Are there any public comments on these items? Here none. Need a motion?
Second?
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Kekta?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Banther?
Yes.
Mayor LaHoozis?
Yes, thank you. We are now going to the item number five, which is the authorized execution amendment to the cost of route funding agreement. Staff report, Mr. Licorice.
Yes, as you see, there's some additional information. Again, we were, we were talking mainly last time about the advertising on the trolley. Again, that's not the specific part of this funding agreement. This funding agreement is our agreement with PSTA, but have you seen, some of my staff has met with those people. As you see on there, there's some opportunities for, for our free, you know, promotional cards. There's some inside-for-event things, and there'll still be discussions that can go on with, with the trolley people and several negotiations on some things in the future. But as you see, there's been some things that we can do and, and we've been given in there, but this specific contract is contracted with PSTA to bring the trolley service through Tarpon, and that's about all the additional information I have for you on this.
Thank you. Well, as I stated the last time, this is really a very beneficial service to the businesses downtown and to the sponge stock, and I'm sure Commissions Seber can testify to that. And I'm also glad that Ms. Windsor came and offers some, I will say incentive, giving us seven signs for seven different trolleys on two different events. Mr. Licorice, I think we are protected advantage of that opportunity, and you work with the merchant association and the Chamber of Commerce. Maybe they can give us some suggestions or what events to use. Any commission comment?
I do, sorry. I just want to make a comment. I rode the trolley not too long ago. I know there was concerns about the money wasn't being monitored or whatever. Well, they had the, you know, we just slipped our money in the machine, and it took, you know, it took its $5 all day long to ride, so I didn't see any issues with that. The one issue I do have is Tarpon Springs doesn't have, or none of the merchants have advertised on the trolley. There's, there's no advertisement on the trolley for Tarpon Springs. So, and I know, and I'm looking at the rates, and they're very affordable, so I just, you know, I don't understand why the merchants aren't advertising more. I think all we had was Rusty Bally's and, at one time, and that's it. So I don't, you know, I'm, I just think it's a good idea, and I think they should take advantage of advertising their businesses because this goes all the way down to Clearwater Beach and back. You know, and, you know, you're sitting there on the trolley for quite a long time, looking at advertisements, and there's nothing there for Tarpon, so I was kind of disappointed in that. But other than that, like I said, the ride was great. It's improved over the years from, you know, when they first started, and it was, it was a fun day. It was a great, it was a great day. So I encourage everybody to use the trolley when they can. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Banther is our representative, PSTA.
Yes, thank you. I supported this last time, last session. Glad there was improvements and adjustments for what Ford was wanting, so I think this is the best option we have in front of us, and the jolly trolley is, I think, some of the benefit that we get at Public Banister in the North County. So I'm in support of this, and I appreciate those involved work with us.
Mr. Steve?
Yes, thank you, and thank you for being here. Also, Rosemary, I know I've complained for years about the coastal route having to stop and take a long time, so I really appreciate the new route and the new service area going to Clearwater Beach, so that's, that's a great improvement. I also take the trolley, and, and now I'm sure that it's going to be much faster, so I appreciate that. As far as advertising, I know the Merchants Association has advertised in the past. We worked with Steve, and other businesses have. I advertise in the jolly trolley map, and so do many of our businesses. They advertise in the map, and I think that the Merchants Association is going to look at advertising again. Is Wendy the best contact then? Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, Mayor. Just to, thank you for coming back with this information and presenting it to the board. Um, it's good to see that there's an opportunity to work with the Jolly Trolley inside of the city, um, for the amount of, um, what's the correct word I'm looking for? Uh, well, the amount of money that the, the PSTA is giving the Jolly Trolley to operate, um, or supplement. So, um, just to reiterate though, one of the topics that I talked about is, um, when I see the Jolly Trolley today, there's a lot of like open signs on the outside. If there's an opportunity, instead of having an open sign, you could slot in one of the partners that work with the Jolly Trolley and the PSTA, uh, overall, to, to drop in some signage for the city of Tarpon Springs or one of the other cities, and that's what I was referring to. Um, I'm not asking for anything favors or anything along those lines, I'm just saying what's, what's recognized as partnership, and if you have open advertisement on the outside, there should be an opportunity to include, um, something for the city of Tarpon, and I know one of the other Commissioners brought up something about the other cities that are involved as well, and so maybe we could rotate, uh, but we could have that further discussion, um, as it goes on, and then we could look at also some paid opportunities as well, but then maybe in the off-season, we could look at dropping in some other advertisement too. So, uh, I'm good with this, I think it's, uh, good to see that we've got some opportunities here to work with the Jolly Trolley.
Are there any public comments on this item? Here, none? The Chair will detain the motion.
Motion.
Second.
In roll call.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Kikta?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Banther? Mayor LaHoozus?
Yes. Item number six is to authorize execution of library interlocken agreement for the fiscal year two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and twenty-three.
Yes, we're presenting this to you again, this comes up, you know, you see it every five years. Um, the formulas, the, you know, all the different mechanisms in, in there hasn't really changed. Uh, in fact, with this agreement, I think Ron and I looking at it, I think we definitely are getting our fair share of the deal. Um, but basically, this is throughout the county, um, our city managers groups involved with it, um, library boards in doing this. Changes, um, I think this has been going on since two thousand and one, about every five years. Um, changes in this are no changes that do not benefit us, um, in the distribution. Again, distribution is fair, it's per capita, there's, there's a big law and formula that I have to let Ron do and stuff, but everything's there, it's been looked at all the cities for fairness, and again, it's time for it to come to you and, and for approval to continue. The money's, of course, in the budget you see we get from the co-op to do our library. Um, I know Carrie's not here tonight, but Carrie's, you know, happy with the agreement, Ron's happy with it from a financial end, um, so there's no reason, um, to be concerned to enter into the next five years of the library contract and, uh, and, you know, get the money that allows us to do a lot of extra things at the library from the co-op.
Are there any Commission comment? Are there any public comments on this item? Here, none? Thank you. I will detain the motion.
Motion approved.
In roll call.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Kikta?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Banther? Mayor LaHoozus?
Yes. The item number seven is the ordinance two thousand and eighteen dash twenty-two, police pension line of duty death benefit. This is the first reading. The City Attorney will read the ordinance, and then we're going to have a staff report by Mr. Licorice.
Ordinance two thousand and eighteen dash twenty-two, an ordinance of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, amending chapter two, administration, article one IH, pensions and retirement, division one, generally, paragraph two dash thirty-five. Additional benefits for police officers of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Tarpon Springs, amending subsection G, pre-retirement death, providing for codification, providing for severability of provisions, repealing all ordinances in conflict here with and providing an effective date. It's the first reading of ordinance two thousand and eighteen dash twenty-two by title only. Second reading to be held on September four, two thousand and eighteen, and to be published in the Tampa Bay Times by title only on August twenty-four, two thousand and eighteen.
Mr. Licorice, staff report?
Yes, if you remember, this board, um, gave me direction, um, to see what I could do to speed up this process. This is a process, um, that you see at the very end, you as a Commission do not get involved, it's got to go through several steps, and you don't see it to the end. I think this item's been in the police pension board and talking about it probably since two thousand and fifteen and sixteen, it's been talked about, um, with the different options. Um, if you remember back when we did the police contract back in, in August, September last year, we cleared our hurdle by saying that we were dedicating all of our city money that we got, um, from the excess, that all of our money from the city would go in to this line of death benefit, and negotiating the contract to tell them to go back and bring something to us. Again, the process was not going fast, so with the assistance of Chief Cochran, um, we went to them with some options. Um, at the time, they had been looking at an eighty percent option. Um, we let them know what some of you had told us, and, uh, that, um, you were of the mind to look at what the state had done with their hundred percent option, that you were open to look at that, and that they should examine that also. So basically, you seen your backup, um, you got the information of the, of the four different options that we had, an eighty percent death benefit, um, retro to ten one seventeen, which was when we approved the money from the contract, eighty percent benefit, um, retro, um, to the date of death, which would be the time of Officer Conduct's incident. And then the same thing happened with a hundred percent benefit, both to the time of the contract and retro to the date of death. Um, and again, um, while this is for Officer Conduct and his family, this is also, hopefully not, but any other family of the officers out there, um, this benefit is for all of them. As you can see the numbers, um, obviously, this Commission was going to go to one of the numbers. Um, as you can see, the different options from the eighty percent, different from the eighty percent with the least retroactivity would have brought your payroll contribution from eleven point eight six to thirteen, to do the hundred percent, retro to the date of death would be fourteen percent. So I made it very clear from what you said, that you were, that you as a Commission would be receptive, um, to that option, especially when you look at the numbers, you know, take all, take everything else out of it, you know, that, that my recommendation and the Chief's recommendation to them was to send forward the hundred, hundred percent death benefit retro to the date of Officer Conduct's death for you to review. We got through the steps of, uh, PBA and getting them to, to endorse it. Um, we brought it just recently to the Pension Board, we then, they brought, they endorsed it and brought it forward to you. So we got through all the steps that you've been waiting for, now it's here in your hands, and the recommendation is the hundred percent death benefit retro to date of death, option four, that you have on your calculations there to approve for Officer Conduct and his family, and to be a benefit of the future if that unfortunate incident happens again to one of our officers, consistent with the state and what they change there's two in sixteen or seventeen. Although we do have a better formula, so it is, but, um, obviously, this is what you brought forward to you, so we're bringing forward the ordinance, first reading and second reading for you tonight, uh, for, for you to review and, uh, make a decision on.
Thank you. Mr. Licorice, I support your recommendation, I think it's fair for the city's pension plan to provide this benefit to the spouse of the police officer who lost his life during the, uh, line of duty to protect us, the citizens of Tarpon Springs, and I am a hundred percent behind to support. Vice Mayor?
Yes, thank you, and I want to thank Mark and your staff for working on this, I know that this was a sensitive issue, and as, as you said, there's, um, layers involved where we don't, as a board, tentatively get involved, but, you know, we are the final authority, and I'm glad that we, you were able to, um, express the final authority's wishes to those boards, and they then felt comfortable endorsing the plan that we have, we have, we have, uh, we have, um, in, 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 in front of us tonight. I know, I, I know we have misconduct here tonight as well, and I know this will bring Charlie back, but I hope that this, that, that, this gives you and your family a small peace of mind financially speaking, and, and then for the, for the, uh, current active duty people we have here in Tarpon Springs, to know for, for, for their, for their spouses that, that, that this is in place, you know, should this happen again, that they will have the hundred percent benefit. So I do think misconduct for, 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 for her patients, this, this was a process that, that had to get worked out, but I think in the end, it is the best possible scenario. And again, I thank Mark and staff for working to get, to, to, to get, to get this, um, to get, to, to get, to get this expedited. I think we can all know here tonight that, with that, we are doing the, the, the right thing, so, so, uh, thank you.
Commissioner Kikta?
Thank you. Um, Mark, please thank everybody involved in, in getting this, like Commissioner or Vice Mayor said, expedited for us. Um, this should have been a no-brainer, and it should have been, um, effective immediately after the incident, so, and, um, I think this is a fair plan, and, uh, unfortunately, you know, unfortunately, we have to exercise this, but, um, hopefully, we don't have to, um, have this for any future, uh, police officer first responders, because, um, they put their life on the line, soon, you know, every single day, twenty-four seven, their life is put on the line, so this is, this is the least that we could do for the family, so, um, thank you.
Commissioner Steve?
Uh, yes, I just want to echo my, uh, fellow colleagues, uh, obviously, this took a little longer than we wanted it to, but, uh, I'm very happy that we were ever able to expedite it and, and, uh, thankful for your family that you'll finally, uh, be able to get this, um, and we hope we don't need it for any future families, but I'm glad that, uh, that we do have it in case.
Commissioner Carr?
Thank you.
I'm in support of all the other Commissioners and Mayor's comments tonight. Uh, again, thank you for bringing this forward. Uh, I'm, I'm encouraged that the, the state made this effort back in two thousand and sixteen and seventeen, and it's good to see that the city's moving forward to this also. Um, there's definitely sacrifices that you make as a police officer, uh, as an opportunity cost, that you put on your boots every day, and you, you know, you're going to miss some time with your family, but the last thing you expect is not to come home. And, uh, I think Tarpon Springs is a very close knit community, uh, this is a family here, and I think this is a great effort to show that the family is taking care of our family as a whole and the community. And I think it's a great effort also to say that we support our Police Department and everyone that works for our Police Department, from the chief down, um, throughout the whole organization, and all the families that are impacted by this also.
Thank you. Are there any public comments on this item? Any public comments on this item? Here, none? The Chair will detain the motion.
Motion approved.
Second.
In roll call, please.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Kikta?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Banther?
Yes.
Mayor LaHoozus?
Yes, thank you. And now we're going to the item number eight, which is the Resolution two thousand and eighteen dash eighteen, Salary and Classification Plan Revision, uh, fiscal year two thousand and nineteen. City Attorney, if you please read the resolution.
Resolution two thousand and eighteen dash eighteen, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, authorizing changes in the organization of the public services, public works, fire, police, human resources, city commission, city manager, city clerk and collector, cultural and civic services departments, including the addition of positions, elimination of positions and wage grades, reclassification and regrading of positions, and providing for an effective date hereof. Resolution two thousand and eighteen dash eighteen by title only.
Mr. Licorice, staff report.
I know it's a lot of paperwork in here, but I, we, I gave a summary the last time we talked, I think I put the page on your desk to outline some of the summary of some of the main portions of it. Um, again, as far as the salary goes, the differences from the six to three percent, again, we've been on a goal for several years now to get those lower salaries, especially the lower salaries of our personnel up. Uh, we do achieve with this pay plan this year that all of our employees will be at least at twelve dollars an hour. We've also reduced our number of people who are under fifteen dollars an hour to only thirty-one full-time employees that are under the fifteen dollar an hour mark. Again, to do this, you know, this issue's been around for a long time, a lot of cities have talked about it and stuff, um, the talk is real easy to go to something like twelve fifty or fifteen dollars an hour. What they forget is those employees who are already at fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen dollars an hour. So what we've been doing is these gradual increases to move everybody up, to move everybody away, so that we can have these, um, there'll be some more adjustments to come, but as you can see, um, we've been able to do this in a slow process, so we don't have the financial shock of if it ever becomes to be competitive to reach those numbers, um, you don't do it all in, in one time. So we were real successful, um, with this, as you can see by the numbers. All this paperwork you see here achieved a simple number you saw in our budget, that we had budgeted for three point five percent for salaries. All this together, we met that goal, although it looks like a hodgepodge and a lot of information, it's still the budgeted three point five percent for all the reorganizations, everything that's done and the raises. The other thing we wanted to do with this salary structure is, we had a lot of people that were out of grade, especially when you talk about secretarial coordinators, um, and we kind of suspended in your approval of this, some of the rules when you move grades, because we just wanted to get some people in the right grades. Obviously, to do this, we knocked off grades four and five to start at six to achieve the twelve dollars an hour. So, so we did an extensive look, and you see a lot of grade changes, but a lot of those grade changes that you see on the second page, um, they didn't come with any money attached to them, but there is advantage to the employee because it gives them more room to grow, where they had a, a top out, um, their top out goes up somewhere five, six thousand dollars, so hopefully, they're good employees, they're going to stay with us longer, and they're not going to reach the top out stage, because they've got more room to go, to where you may hear some rumblings, geez, they moved me three grades and I didn't get any money, it's still going to be advantage. And again, a lot we did to look at the people who got a little bit extra money, it was strictly where their salaries were. We looked, where do you fall between the twelve dollars, thirteen, fifteen? Um, again, to put, not only put them in the grade, but slot them in these raises in the right place, and it was a very long process, but I think we achieved it, um, going backward and forwards or anything. As you see down on the third page, we, we go through some different reclassifications, we upgraded some job descriptions in the process, um, some people have been doing duties for a long time, we actually show it within the job description. Um, we took a couple places where we had part-time positions and made full-time positions, as you see in the library, which cost net, did not cost us, you know, again, all this stayed within the three point five percent that we have budgeted. Um, the only major reorganization was in, in the cultural and civic service department, Diane Wood has had her year in to look, and I think her reorganization, not only is her organization, um, where it needs to be with the type of personnel, but is also the key to deal with our marketing issue and allow some help for Karen in the marketing of not only marketing, um, you know, the performing arts, but marketing the city. Um, with Diane's experience, Diane can fill in at any meeting that Karen goes to, um, no matter where it is. Um, Kelly Reidy, who's seeing this, goes to second in command, her experience, and she was hired for our marketing skills. So there is going to be a ready resource with her new position and adding those extra marketing details. There'll be a third position that's involved in marketing within this reorganization. So they've already had preliminary talks, um, with Karen, some with Judy Staley, who does some, some of the things with the, with the cards that we have in the, in the different tourist places and the welcome centers, and they've already started to get together, and I think you'll see, um, pretty quickly that once everything gets done and hired, um, and immediately, because some of these people obviously are in the position with Diane and, and Kelly stepping forward right away and working with Karen, I think we'll solve that issue. And again, we're still coming within this thing with a three point five, with the addition of FEMA to add the thirty-five thousand, we were going to look at salary for thirty-five thousand dollars of additional marketing to mark, to market our city with. So obviously, I'd, you know, I'd ask you to watch and see how this is going to work, I'm convinced it is. Um, that is really the only main reorganization we have, a lot of them are some, some different things, different little changes in positions, some, some small moves, but again, this whole document and everything you see with it puts people where they belong in the organization, stays within the three point five percent that we budgeted for the increases, and, and I think accomplishes every one, way, way, thing we want employees. It was looked at, um, by the Budget Advisory Committee, um, and approved. Um, also, they had a question about checking if we were keeping up, and every year, obviously, we did a big salary study in-house, um, and we've been watching, and the average of, of Pinellas County is about three percent. And we've been watching and the average of, of Pinellas County is about 3% going up. As you see, this is 3.5. So, so we're gonna be right in line. Obviously, as you saw from the police and their, their attrition has drastically halted. Um, other positions, we haven't seen the losing to other places. So this keeps us competitive, this keeps us right in the middle to keep people and, uh, again, moving forward, um, what you've tried to accomplish, um, for employees. And again, to do it in a tight budgetary time and within that tight number you did, I think this document and approval of this will accomplish that.
Mr. Licorice, thank you. Uh, and I'm glad that the employees with the low hourly wages are now gonna get the higher percentage as we did last year. I think it worked out very well. We'll bring them to a point that I get a, a decent paycheck. How many, uh, part-time employees do we have and what kind of percentage do we give them?
Um, part-time employees are in, in the same line of the...
Falling in the same percentage?
Yes, they fall in the same percentage.
Same percentage as the, as the others?
Yeah.
They get the, uh, what, the 6%?
If, if they fall in that salary range. We've got part-timers that's in all salary ranges depending what they, but they will get, they get consistent with what the percentages are for the full-time employee, the full, the part-time employees.
And, uh, of course, I made with, uh, Ms. Lemus about the marketing position, which is so important to have. And we had a very, uh, productive, um, discussion. And, uh, I did realize that we were duplicating the, uh, the services that they're already doing some at the, uh, at the culture and civic services. So now we're all gonna be combining together. So I think it's gonna be, uh, uh, more productive and, uh, and, uh, I think the reorganization is gonna be, uh, ve- very beneficial. Commissioner Kikta?
Thank you. I have a question for you, Mark. Did we go out and, and, and I, and I support what we have here, but I just have a question about going out to other cities and did we do the, uh, like a survey and see where the same positions where they fall with pay? Are we, did we do a...
We did one about three or four years ago and what we've been monitoring is the movement of each of them. We're probably gonna be due next year to do the full one again, um, the full study and stuff. But what we've been doing since we did the last one is monitoring where the other cities have moved people and we've been right, right in line with what the other cities have been doing. So that keeps us scaled. But probably this next coming year, we talked about, we need to do the full, full job, full description and stuff of them. Um, um, that would probably be coming up for the next time, because now that we've got this thing set, pretty well set over the last three or four years with, with structure and our employees and where they fall, now we need to do another comparison. So, so there's gonna be, there, there's gonna be a full one before next year, but we have been keeping up each year with what they're doing in the other cities, what wages, what changes.
That's what I just wanted to make sure.
We are consistent each year.
And that we're in the middle pay range.
And we did this year, the Budget Advisory Committee, we looked at it and did the survey of all of them and we're, we're right consistent or a tiny bit above what the other cities have done.
Okay.
So I think the average was 3.13% and, and we're doing 3.5.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Banther, you have a comment?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to, Mark and staff member, I think this started back when I was in the, the, uh, Budget Advisory Committee. When it was looked, I know we had many, both sworn and civilian, but, but especially civilian employees in, in very low pay grades. And, um, I'm glad to say that. I mean, um, our, our city, our city, um, uh, like, like, are like, are like minimum wage for full-time employees, I assume is far above the national average. And, uh, uh, anything we can do to stay competitive, as we've seen in the, in the building department, it is, it, it, though, is important. So when people see us giving raises, it's not just to adjust, um, people that have been low, but it's to be competitive as apparently having some issues there. So thank you for this work and I'm sure you'll do great next year on the full search, though. I will, I will, I won't be here for that.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes, thanks, Mark, for, uh, for all this hard work. I know it took a lot of time to figure all this out and I appreciate the regrades and reclassifications that have brought those employees, uh, up to, uh, a different level. Uh, one of the questions I had actually has been answered. I know when I was on the Budget Advisory Committee, we looked at how we compare in salaries to other communities, surrounding communities, and we were always in the mid-range. And I just wanted to make sure we were still there.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks for, uh, the discussion. Thank you, Mayor, for the time to talk. I just have a question, um, so I understand this a little bit more. I, I got this when I, I know, uh, email went out today that some pages were missed out or were missed on the backup. Um, the Tarpon Arts Operations Manager, that's the new position, right? Am I reading that right?
Yeah. Diane, you wanna come in in case we got some?
Diane Wood, um, Arts Marketing, uh, Arts Marketing, uh, Cultural and Civic Services. This is my first time. Yes, um, we do have, um, actually, we just renamed that position to Tarpon Arts Operations Manager. Kelly Reedy is now the Arts Marketing and Programs Manager. So we've renamed that, but we've also renamed the other positions. If you look at the, um, the current and the, the new, uh, description, um, we had Arts and Cultural Assistance and then, um, a Office Administrator. It's now going to be the Patron Services Coordinator, the Marketing and Events Specialist, and, um, the Department Administrator. Those will be the new titles. And basically, what I did is looking at the job responsibilities, you know, within Tarpon Arts, is to kind of put them, you know, within those positions, the responsibilities within those positions, a little bit, make a little bit more sense, you know, to the, the skill level needed, you know, for those positions.
So is there somebody that's already gonna be in the Tarpon Arts Operations Manager role, or is that?
Yes.
Gonna be a hired position?
That would be Kelly Reedy.
Okay.
My number two.
Is she, is that position currently at wage 21 or is that at a different wage grade today?
She was 19 going to 21.
19 going to 21.
Okay. I, I don't necessarily support that. I don't, I know there's a lot that goes in, but that's a substantial amount of money to have in that position, I think, already. Um, you guys do a great job. I, I understand that and I appreciate the, the job description. Um, I talked with Karen also and there's some nice, we had some great conversations about how they can interact with, um, how the Economic Development Group and then the Planning Group can interact with the Arts Group. But I think ultimately, we need to put some more, I know, I've never referenced my job description, my current job, and I think job descriptions can be very vague, but if we're putting a job description together, I think we need to have some more details about, um, the interactions with other departments and marketing overall, um, for the city, if we're saying this is a marketing position for the arts. So, um, I mean, it sounds like everybody else is already okay with this, but I, I have some reservations about the grade that's put on for the, for this position, um, with the salary and benefits overall. Uh, I do think it's important, um, to have marketing with, I, I think it's a great idea to, to tie in the marketing with the Arts Department who already has the positions and who's redesigning it, but I think that's a little too high when I'm looking at the wages here, uh, for that wage grade. Uh, but if the rest of the board's okay with it, then I don't really have anything else to say about it.
Commissioner Seber?
Uh, I kinda wanna, um, you know, talk about what you just said. Um, looking at the job description and I appreciate, of course, you know, the marketing for, for, uh, Tarpon Arts. Um, it only talks about marketing for Tarpon Arts efforts and, uh, for events and for season shows and events and for Tarpon Arts community, uh, and social media promoting, uh, the Tarpon Arts. So, um, I, I haven't had a conversation with both of you about how is that going to also include the city? Because that's one of the things that, you know, I've been looking for is some marketing for the city and some research and data uh, for the city, uh, on marketing. So, um, I'd like to see some of that in the job description.
I believe that down, um, a little bit further, it talks about, um, doing some marketing for the city. We did have a meeting, uh, Kelly and I with Karen Lemons and we talked about the joint needs and some of the things that we already do where we could help her, and we came up with a list of things. Um, in marketing, you're always, um, doing analytics, you're always doing data collection and, you know, sifting through it and everything. And so we've identified lots of different areas, the Merchants Association, the, um, Chamber of Commerce, um, the city website, our data that we collect and just kind of collaborating and gathering and sharing those demographics and statistics for visitor information. There's a wealth of information out there. And I think to put all of them together, I mean, I could show you mine and I shared it with Karen. And, um, it's just amazing what you can mine, you know, from our websites and our social media. And then we could also provide help with graphic design, creating new collateral for the city, um, ad design. You know, whenever we come up with, um, ads for different things, like the trolley or the newspaper or billboards or whatever we choose to do. Um, media negotiation and ad buys. We've already done that for Tarpon Arts. Um, and so we can go ahead and, uh, fold in the City of Tarpon Springs into those negotiations we've already done for the lowest possible rates, you know, that Karen could take advantage of too. And then research and creation of, of marketing outline with associated costs, you know, just to kind of do a whole marketing plan that would, that we could both, you know, work on. And then drafting press releases if that's something that, you know, we need to do. Those are just some things that we've, you know, identified. Um, and already, like, for instance, today, we're members of Visit Florida. And so, um, we sent Karen an email this evening that, um, Visit Florida is giving businesses in Pinellas County the opportunity to ship up to 2,000 brochures to each of the five Florida Welcome Centers at no cost um, through February 2019 due to the red, uh, tide crisis. So that's something that not only the city can take advantage of, but also our Tarpon Springs businesses. So those are the kind of things that we could share.
Appreciate that. I, and I, I definitely think we should share. I wasn't talking about advertising necessarily though, but also, uh, creating some type of data or research that comes back to us, like pedestrian counts. Where are tourists coming from? Are they coming from Clearwater Beach to here? Are they coming from out of the country? Some data that we are just not collecting on a regular basis, like quarterly basis or even at least biannual basis so that we can know where to move forward and where, where to advertise. Um, I was just talking to, um, uh, people who are in the, um, economic, uh, not economic, the Tourist Development Council. And they were saying that there is money there for our city. We just need to be there and we need to participate. And so those are the kind of things that I, I really feel like we need to focus on as well. Um, and what they suggested is we work with Clearwater Beach, especially because a lot of the beaches are doing very well. The, uh, international, the Tampa International is doing very well. They're above records. We're not seeing that here in Tarpon, so we need to figure out how to get people from the beaches to here and, uh, visit Tarpon for a day and, and, uh, figure out who's coming to Tarpon.
And we strategize about things like that all the time, so we would be happy to, to help because we have a lot of tools at our disposal that, you know, we can share.
Got a marketing background, so appreciate that.
Yeah, and tourism, so Kelly and I are excited to help, actually.
Good, well, we've been meaning it for a long time.
Great, thank you. If there's any other questions?
Commissioner Kikta?
Yeah, I had, I just wanna make another comment. I, I forgot about that. Commissioner Seber and I had, uh, gone down county last week and, uh, we met somebody from the TDC and they really suggest there's some openings on the board there, uh, that are coming up, right?
In October, they'll have four new positions opening on that board.
So, you know, I think it would be helpful, um, if we had somebody, some presence down there. Uh, I, you know, it's out of sight, out of mind. So, um, I know Clearwater gets most of the money, it's what it sounds like, in some of the coastal communities down that south, but they forget about North County. Everybody forgets about North County. But I think, I really feel if, if we have some presence there, maybe we could, we could also get some dollars as well. And, you know, we were talking about, um, foot traffic and keeping, keeping count of all that and, um, that, that can, you know, the chamber had something to do with that as well, I believe. I don't, I don't know. We were talking about that.
I, uh, yeah, I don't know. Just to say what you were mentioning about those four positions, I did mention it to somebody who may volunteer because we really don't have anybody above Clearwater, uh, volunteering on, on that board. So we need some.
They need restaurateurs or, um, hotel, people from hotel businesses, something like that.
Well, to be honest with you, the nice thing about Kelly, um, moving up to this new position is that it's going to free me up to do more of that. I would love to participate on the TDC.
That's just the other thing, let me get in real fast, because of course, the marketing thing has dominated this thing. This is also moving her up to the second-in-command position. The reason grade 21 was taken is we're slotting, you see, we made another change of a second command, moving them for 20 to 21, because that's kind of where we wanna slot that, that area to second-in-command. So, marketing dominates thing, but going back to the job descriptions and having people within the organization, you need to keep this position that we're talking about. Marketing is just one facet, just because this person has a lot of skills in there and a lot of skills with graphic design, stuff like that, that's gonna save her salary increase, it'll save it several times over. But this is also a second-in-command position, doing things in second-in-command also free up. So the slotting and where it's going is to be consistent with a second command. Marketing pointed in it, but one of the biggest components that we don't talk about, because marketing is dominating, is the second command in this position.
Right. Well, this is, you know, this isn't gonna take her away or anybody that, whoever you decide would go down there from, I mean, this is one, they meet once a month?
Once a month, they have four positions opening after October and I think I have one person already that's gonna volunteer, so. It's in the morning.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Banther?
Yes, thank you. And, uh, one thing that I told Karen when we told, when, 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 when we spoke was that, um, you know, I, I was agreeing with, with, uh, Commissioner Seber that I was in support of a, of a full-time person. I realized, you know, with the, with the cuts that, 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 that we're facing here in the future, that's, might not be the best thing, uh, to, to, to do fiscally. And this is a good starting ground to see if it needs to be kept with another position or its own position. And, and y'all in the future might decide that it needs to be, it, it's, it's own position. Um, but we need to have that. I'm also glad too, because far too long, for no fault of any one person, I felt like the city and the Arts Department have been completely separate. And we need to be together. There's so much talent in the Art Department as far as their marketing, which is what we're doing here, and advertising and then doing things that we here in City Hall, per se, just aren't good at. And so I, I, I really hope that by doing this, this change here, that we bring these two together under, under, under one umbrella. Because when, when we're doing the arts and all, and all the plays in here and whatnot, that, that, that is promoting Tarpon Springs. And we can piggyback off that with this new job description, with it, with it, with, with, with this new position, and then use that for, for Tarpon as well. I hope this will help boost as well the, the chamber and, 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 and the merchants too. Um, but I'm, I am open to suggestions, though I am in support of the, of the proposed. I, I, if I might, Mayor, ask, ask Commissioner Carr, is there something he's proposing with this pay scale? Or is there, is, is there any kind of particular, uh, issue, or is it just, you, 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 you just think it's too high?
Yeah, um, overall, I would think that 19 is more of a reasonable area in this position. But, um, I haven't done a study myself to see where this would go. I'm just looking at the two top salaries and then the rest of the salaries in this department. I know it's beneficial to have these individuals in our city and that they're very valuable. But I do have concerns at looking at top, top-tiered salaries, uh, for one and two. Um, I know that 19 is already a pretty substantial salary to begin with, but it's just looking at this and looking at some of the issues we're gonna be looking at in the further, um, future years, um, from funding. I, I just have some concerns about it. But Mayor, if I could also echo what Vice Mayor is saying, and, and I, I feel it's important that all departments, and I, I'm glad to hear that you guys are working with the Economic Development Group and the Planning Group and the City Manager's Office. And, um, if it's the police, if it's the fire, if it's the planning, if it's the wastewater, we've got to all remember that we work for the residents of Tarpon Springs and that we represent Tarpon Springs as a whole. So it would also be encouraging to see that Tarpon Arts just fall under Tarpon Springs instead of Tarpon Arts as itself out in the community. Uh, I think that's an important part to make sure that we're focusing on Tarpon Springs as a whole instead of maybe a specific department as a whole too, so.
Are there any other comments? Are there any public comments on this item? Here none? I need a motion.
Second.
In roll call.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Kikta?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Banther?
Yes.
Mayor LaHoozis?
Yes, thank you. Well, that concludes the regulation agenda and we go to staff comments. Well, that concludes the regularization agenda and we go to the comments. Police Chief, uh, Major. Deputy Attorney.
No comments.
Deputy Manager.
No, sir.
City Clerk. Commissioner Carr.
I've got a couple things. Thanks, Mayor. Um, just to start off with, uh, I would like to talk about our backups that we receive, um, uh, before our meetings. We typically get them, uh, on Friday afternoon or I'll come in Saturday morning to grab them. And I know they're available online. Um, I obviously feel that this is a really important aspect and I know there's a lot of hard work that goes into these backups. Uh, this is a lighter agenda, which, uh, which is nice. Uh, but then the agendas that we have, uh, larger agendas on, it, it's difficult for me as an individual who works full-time, to really dedicate the time that I need to over the weekend, just primarily over the weekend, to review the paperwork, to make sure that I've done my due diligence and to ask questions and to reach out to other resources that I may need to. Uh, I think it might be a good idea to look at in the future to getting these maybe the week before instead of, was it three or four days beforehand? And then having Monday and Tuesday to try to rush through to ask the questions to city staff and to get answers back and so on. So I, I think that would be a good idea to look at something in the future to, maybe we could discuss it as a board as an agenda item, or we could talk about it offline with the city manager individually. Um, but overall, I, I would like to see that.
Week before? A little bit, a long time to prepare those things anyway. Mr. LaCourage, you have any, uh, opinion on that?
Not right now. Let me think on it.
Yeah.
Sometimes it's tough to get those agendas by Friday.
Yeah, well, just wait till the next meeting is what it needs to do.
But there's some, there's some ways that, that some of the items that we have, um, that we get the backup material sooner, if you, if, you know.
Maybe.
There's some other ideas. Let me think on some other ideas to get a lot of the information, uh, but obviously we could wait on some of those and go a meeting ahead, but a lot of these, a lot of these things, um, can't, but I can look at some at least, especially if we got big things, we got things done to get some of the agenda items to, like we've done periodically, we've sent some things ahead. I know we sent the salary thing ahead of time at a budget to give you more time to look at it, to start looking at getting some of those things out early to you to look at, um, the things that really need a lot of time to go through to kind of cut down what do you have to do if you get the agendas third day or Friday. But we can look and see about moving some of those things up and getting it to you.
Some of the items that, uh, cycling reviews have already went through, the planning and zoning, maybe we can get that ahead of time. Things like that.
Yeah.
But there are some times though that, uh, the planning and zoning, don't look at it just a few days before we get it, you know? So you have that. That's, this is why I'm saying that.
Yeah. Well, it also goes down, I mean, I was on, I was on two boards as well, the Historic Preservation Board and the Planning and Zoning Board, and it was still a struggle. I remember even board members, other board members talking about it, saying, look, we're volunteers. We want to be able to do the best we can, but we're not necessarily having the time to, to dedicate that we need to, to review the backup data. And, uh, it's just an important thing to me. I know, I know the city staff puts a lot of work behind it, but I think ultimately at the end of the day is that we have to tell applicants, look, this is the cutoff time. This is the time that we need a city staff to review this and get the data to the, the boards or the commissioners or whoever it's going to be, so they can make the best decision for the residents as a whole. And, uh, and that's really what it comes down to is making the best decision for the residents. It's not about me personally or it's not about anybody else that's going to be up here. It's really about the residents and I think this would benefit the residents, um, if we have the most time to look at it. So I'm looking forward to talking more about it. Also, can we just, can you give me an update too, Mark, about, uh, what's going on with the little building on the bayou? I know initially I talked about, uh, a police substation of some sort. We've talked about, um, some city development. Um, is there an update on that or where that's, where we're going with it?
We're real close. We hope to give you announcements soon to be opening up. Um, again, it's going to be, we're going to be doing some economic development things out there. The police will have access to it in the evening and stuff, hours to do. And we are real, real close and hopefully this week to let you know when we're going to open up and start operating.
Great, thank you.
Commissioner Seaver.
Sure. Um, on what you were saying, uh, Jacob, um, some of the things that we get like on the day of the meeting, like updated, uh, data, you know, that I didn't see until I got here to the dais tonight. Um, I, I don't sit at a computer all day. So it's, it, you know, I know it's difficult because you're getting updates, um, at the last minute, but sometimes those are difficult to read or even be prepared.
Questions one commissioner calls about and so we want to get the information to all of you for the, for the night. But we also try to email those out also, but I know people are working. If they're working, it doesn't matter if, if you email it, you might not see it till a very short time before the meeting. But a lot of those times, one person has a question or we note something, we want to have it and, uh, obviously we don't like to do that a lot, but, um.
Well, on another note, I just got back from the League of Cities Conference in Hollywood and it was great. I was happy to be there to represent Tarpon Springs. Um, these conferences are not only educational to me, uh, we, we of course have to do, uh, ethics and certain, uh, classes that we have to take, but, uh, this conference was the 50th anniversary of Home Rule and, uh, they had an actual rally with the banners of all the different cities and, and, uh, the different leagues. And, uh, it, it was amazing. It just was totally amazing. We, we had some great speakers. I also went to a, um, gubernatorial candidate forum, uh, and Jeff Green, Gwen Graham, Andrew Gilliman, Philip Levine were there. So it was interesting to, to hear them and, and, uh, see what they had to say. Uh, so like I said, it's not only a learning experience, but it's also a great networking experience because you meet, uh, uh, officials from different cities, elected officials from different cities and can bounce ideas off each other, see what they're doing and, and talk to them and, and network. And, uh, so I really enjoyed the conference and thank you for the opportunity to go.
Did you go to Death by Chocolate?
They didn't have that this time.
It's a room built with all different chocolate fountains and all kinds of stuff to dip in.
I miss that. No, it was, it was, it was very quiet compared to last year.
Oh, okay.
Commissioner K.
I don't have any comments.
Death by Chocolate's the only thing on our mind.
That is the best thing, right, Mark?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Panther.
Thank you. And I, I want to thank Commissioner Seaver for going to that event. Or, or to that comments rather. I, I've only been to one. It's certainly my thing, but I, I do think it's important that we at least have one person go. So I appreciate you going for that and, and, uh, representing Tarpon Springs and I know, I enjoy your Facebook photos and it looked like quite the rally of, uh, a, a, a home rule there, like a political convention almost, so.
I have buttons and signs for everybody.
That's about it, but it is a very important topic. I mean, it is very important. Uh, one thing, and I've, I've always wanted to propose this. I'm not going to like put on the agenda, but this addresses, I think, some of what Commissioner Carr is talking about. We really need to move away from these binders and like paper agenda. I mean, I'm the least green person here on, on this board by any measure. I've used my iPad since like month two. The time and the money it takes to put these together is ridiculous. And I, though I know the staff has to get the report ready and then it's printed and put in there, but I have to believe and then correct, you correct me, Mark, Mark, if I'm wrong, the process would speed up some, like with PSTA. It's called like, uh, Cassandra, what's it called? Granicus, whatever. Yeah, Granicus. It's an app on the iPad. And it's not just the website. Like I, I use the city's website. This is an app on, on the iPad and everything's loaded in there. It's like a whole software program. So staff could load stuff that's like very easy and all ready to go a week ahead of time. And then obviously there's stuff that can't be put in a week ahead of time and that's loaded towards the end where we have our cutoff time. So I'm not going to force it on my last six months here on the board, but I really do think this board needs to enter the 21st century of backup. And it would save money. It would save a lot of staff time and I really think it would help get your items out quicker. So, and, uh, we all can afford an iPad. The city doesn't have to like buy one for us. So all that would be is the cost of the app and what it does to do it. And I have no clue what that is, but I'm sure Karen could find that out or Judy. But I really think looking at that down the road will help speed up the backup process and save a lot of money because this is just way too much papers and binders. That's, that's, that's just my thoughts and no other comments. I, I have PSTA in the morning and all, and I'll, um, use my Granicus out there. We actually vote in there too, but that's, we don't have to vote here on that board. There, there's only five of us there. But anyway, so that's, that, that's something to think about. Then I help that problem and then save, save money too.
Thank you. On Monday, August 27th and Thursday, August 30th, the PSTA will have the Senior Transportation Event at our Senior Information Center, which is located in our library. And, uh, that'll start at 10 a.m. to 2 p.m. Also, free rides are available. If anyone was interested to get a free ride, they can call the United Taxi, which is 727-777-7777. And they also can call the Neighborly Care Network with 727-571-4384. And I think this is going to be a great event and actually we are very, getting very close to provide senior transportation service here in Tarpon Springs. So this is only the beginning. And, uh, and I'm sure that, uh, our representative of the PSTA, uh, Vice Mayor Panther will be over there with us.
I will.
Um, also we have, uh, on, uh, September 1st through, uh, September 3rd, we got the Sponge Docks. We have the Art and Craft Show from 10 a.m. to 6 p.m. I think this is going to be a very popular event. Are you ready for that?
I'm, I'm ready.
Okay. Well, that concludes the regularization meeting and it's adjourned at 7:49 p.m. Thank you all for being here tonight.